Good evening. It's six o'clock and we're going to go ahead and convene the meeting. The clerk is informed, she has taken role, and we have a quarrel. Um, will you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with the reprieve of justice.
At this time, we'll open up for a public comment. Do we have any citizens who wish to speak before us tonight? Second call, third call, final call, we move on. Uh, tonight, we'll be working on, this will be our first meeting, on preparation of the 2024 through 2028, this capital improvements plan. It's going to be presented by Steve Barge tonight, and Steve, I'll let you take it away.
Uh, thank you, appreciate that. Uh, just give a little bit of a primer on the CIP process, especially for those of you who are new. I know some of you have been through this more than a few times. But, uh, the capital improvement program is our, we always call it our second most important financial document of the, the year. The first being the annual budget. The budget is a fixed document. When we assign how much we're going to spend and take in in revenue, uh, that is something that we deal with. You see budget resolutions during the year. We make changes. It's something that we need to adjust in a formal process. The, the five-year capital improvement program is more of a fluid document. Uh, you'll see from year to year, those of you who've been around, that there might be a project slated for 2024, and then a year or two later, it's been backed up to 2026, and then maybe it's moved up to 2025, the next year. A lot of the street projects in particular depend upon the conditions that we're experiencing and seeing after freeze thaw, and compared to other projects that might be higher or lower on the, the pecking order. We do prioritize them at staff level. The intent is, is to try and do the most important things first, obviously. And the most important things that we look at are keeping up our facilities as they are today, maintaining them. So, before we look at new improvements, we look at trying to make sure that the streets and facilities, buildings, parks that we have are being properly cared for. That is our number one function, and obviously it was a tight financial environment. So you'll probably see evidence of that along the way. The, uh, you see the document that's laid out, we're going to go through it tonight by the order alphabetically of the departments. We've done different things, but that way, I think it, uh, it flows and the booklet reflects that. The, the document you have online is laid out in that fashion. The revenues are many. Uh, the, the one we talk about a lot in this room for these meetings is long-term borrowing. Uh, that's what we, we bring up, and you'll see Jennifer coming back in, in June. Uh, we've already gone up with a preliminary resolution on a borrowing of roughly $4 million. That will be finalized next month, and we'll execute the borrowing. Hopefully we'll get a decent interest rate and move the projects forward. Uh, but there are other funding sources, and you see them in the book. You see everything from donations, grants, fees, um, tax levy to some limited degree. We don't have a lot of tax levy to go around anymore toward capital projects. Uh, even we have some ARPA funds left over to use for the next couple of years, uh, lesser than we had when this program came out about 18 months ago, but, uh, there's still dollars to be put to use from that federal program. Uh, the, uh, the premise of the, the capital improvement plan is we tried to spread out borrowing over a period of time to what the financial advisor says that we can afford. And, um, and as a result, some projects fall through. We started out with a, a higher amount before we got to here. We were, I think, at 23.2 million, and we pared it down to, uh, under 22.5 million over the, the five-year period. Dave Costin, I'm sorry, Dave Ferris from, from Ellers, uh, has, he set that as our, our guide for borrowing. Now, a couple of things you needed to keep in, in mind. We sometimes talk about bigger projects like the, the Public Works Garage. There's nothing in this program for the Public Works Garage. Another item that's not in there is the police station, and we know we're right now looking at the Buffalo Building as a possible location. We talked about putting a placeholder in there for what might be. If the, the study looks good and we want to go ahead and, and take that donation, there will obviously be renovation, remodeling costs, possibly some expansion with garages or whatnot. We didn't know what dollar amount to put in, so we haven't put anything yet at all, because it would have been a throwing at a dartboard type of event. But keep in mind that we understand if that goes forward, there probably will have to be things moved back into a future year or taken off to make room for that project if it's going to go forward. The, uh, I was going to make another comment on that, but, um, we have different funds involved. You'll see there's also, you know, wastewater, EMS, I mean, so keep in mind that some of these funds are also enterprise funds that we're going to be talking about, um, as far as where the expenses come, that come from user fees intended to, to be supportive of that operation to the extent that tax dollars are not part of that program. Those are some of the basics. Any initial comments on, on the process or, or how this is supposed to work? If you have them, bring them on as we go along. What we're going to do tonight is we're going to walk through as many of these different categories as we have. We've got all the, the department and division heads here, uh, and, uh, they'll walk through each project, whether it's a 2024 project or a future year. Our goal for this is that you understand the projects. You understand the, the value of the projects, maybe in your mind you weigh in, the thought of which ones are more important than others. Because that's what we're looking at. We're looking at where to spend our limited dollars, and we're not looking to borrow any more than we have to. Uh, we are, we are playing fairly close to that 4.5 million number, but, uh, if we can come down from that and, and hit our top priorities, um, so be it. So you may see projects that you feel are less important than others. That's what this, this whole series of two meetings is about. With that in mind, if it's okay, I'll kick off the start. Is that all right with Council President?
Please go.
Okay. Uh, the first one is administration, and I'll be representing that category, and that's taxi vehicles. If you look at the taxi vehicles, you see, uh, that we are alternating, as we've done in the past, buying one in one year and then two the next year, and then one and then two. That's worked pretty well for us to alternate one or two on the, um, alternate years. The grant pays for 80% of the cost, so if you see, you know, $70,000 on there, if you look down, you'll, you'll see that 56,000 roughly of that would be covered by, by grants, and we'd be picking up the other 14,000. And, uh, that's a benefit to us to, to be able to keep the cost down. Um, and, uh, but we, we do need to replace these vehicles. They get a lot of hard use over time, um, so we try to keep up on, on the fleet. Any questions? And that's in a special fund, that's in Fund 220. Any questions on that item, the only item from administration? Okay, thank you. We'll move on.
Okay. The next one up is, um, airport. Do we have anybody here representing the airport tonight? Tom, I think. That's just about everything, isn't it, Tom?
Yeah, okay, uh, we have, um, several projects. Uh, first one being snow removal equipment building. Uh, and these are all typically 80-20 splits or 90-10 splits. The second one is to replace the medium intensity approach lighting system. Uh, the third project is, uh, the reconstruction of pavement on runway 1634. And, um, there's a, has been a meeting with the DOT, uh, or the Department of Aeronautics, and they're looking at some of the joint issues on that runway right now, uh, that we have. Then, uh, uh, following that in '25 is the demolition of the old terminal building, and the, finally, the precision approach path indicator lights.
Okay, um, I, I sit on that airport committee, and there's been, uh, I, as you, as you know, there's been some problem with the joint, the, uh, the compression joints on the, uh, on the runway. Um, I, I had the last information I got from, uh, the airport manager and the last conversations with BOA, or Bureau of Aeronautics, is that, uh, they're thinking, the, well, the patch they used didn't work. It's only lasted two years. It's as bad as now as it was before they started. Um, so I, I, there are a couple of things. I don't think, um, I, I don't think that they're, we're going to get money for 2025, because if they determine that a total rebuild is the only way around it, we go to the bottom of the list. So there, I, it's okay to hold it in there, but, uh, we may be making a change, um, somewhere down the line, maybe next year. It depends on what would happen with, uh, with, with how we get, uh, ranked on, on the airport property on the, the, uh, the new reconstruction anyway. So, anyway, I just wanted to make the committee aware of that, or the, uh, you're not a committee, you're a council. I'm not used to sitting in this chair. Um, the, uh, I wanted to make you aware that there's, that, that those numbers, the dates are pretty fluid, and we don't know exactly which way they're going to go. So, um, anyway, Tom, did you have any, you get any further information on that, or?
Uh, the, I think the BOA was talking about doing some arbitrary padging related saw, sections of the runway out and put new asphalt in. So we're doing some more research on that right now.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have any word of what they're, the only thing we're adamant about is we've already paid once for this. We don't want to pay twice. So that's, um, that's a major issue right there. Any other questions? Yeah, Mr. Sauber?
So, at a recent meeting, we were hearing about asphalt being carried out by the dump truck load, and now it sounds like the funds needed to resurface, um, the runway, which are slated for 2025, could potentially get pushed out, so it just seems to be going in the wrong direction.
I'm, I'm not sure what the BOA would be considering. I think what they were looking at is maybe hitting the worst joints for now to get it to that point so that they can do the total reconstruct, um, but I don't know the exact answer on that right now. And the material that they're taking off was actually, it's a rubberized patch fill that, like we do on some of our roads, and that's been peeling up, and they're worried about it, um, uh, getting caught in, in plane motors and stuff.
So my, my question, I guess, really is, um, where's the priority? Is it waiting for the funds to be available, or is it fixing the runways that need to be fixed?
Well, I think it's also a safety issue, too. Um, there has been a couple, uh, jet owners that are really, um, fearful of pulling something from the runway up into their, their, uh, expensive planes.
They're also, uh, they're, they're also concerned about the, uh, the damage to the aircraft's tires, um, because it actually cuts the tires, uh, when they, when they hit those things at 135 miles an hour. And, uh, the, those things run about a thousand, those tires run about a thousand bucks a piece. So, uh, that's, that gets to be a little expensive.
Yeah, so just to kind of run the topic around then, if we don't have funds avail, available, ARPA grant funds, um, what's the contingency plan then?
I, I don't think they've talked about pulling it. I think what they're looking at is just fixing the worst joints for now until they can get ready for the, the full-blown project.
And that, could that be pushed back a couple of years?
I, the, they have made no comments to us at this time about pushing it back.
I know we, we've asked our legislative delegation to, uh, encourage a quicker start on it. I thought, I don't know what's going to happen.
So will we know by the June 1st meeting? Because it looks to me, just from what I'm hearing, um, that this should be a higher priority than 2025.
Well, I've only sat through two or three meetings at this committee level, so I don't have a good answer for you right now, if I can get you an answer by the next meeting.
Okay, any more on the airport? If not, next is cemetery.
Good evening. Uh, we have six projects in the cemetery, uh, over the next five years. Three of those are road projects, and two are columbariums. I'll kind of go in order. The first one is the cemetery road project, a road maintenance 2024. That's our routine maintenance for the roads in the city section. Uh, we rip up and replace as much as we can afford for that year, and then we do a lot of that work in-house, except for the laying of the asphalt, which we contract with American Asphalt with the city's contract. The next one is the cemetery maintenance building roof. That is the replacement of that roof on that building. Building was, uh, it's quite old. Roof is, uh, tearing up. Uh, we need to replace the building, but obviously with our budget challenges, that's not in the cards, so we're going to replace the roof and keep it going as long as we can. Next one is, uh, cemetery columbarium, uh, veterans. Uh, we, uh, been working with the Veterans Council of Marshfield. Uh, they're going to raise funds and, and donate $55,000 for a columbarium to be put at the veterans area. Uh, so we'll help coordinate that, but they'll cover the costs, and then I believe they're going to be paying or allowing veterans to have sites or spaces there, and they'll coordinate that effort, but they'll cover the costs for that construction. Next one is cemetery road maintenance for 2025. Once again, $15,000 just to go towards road ma, road maintenance at the cemetery. Again, in 2027, another 15,000. And the last one is, uh, cemetery columbarium for the city. Uh, ours was last constructed in 2020. Uh, we're already running out of spaces. Uh, columbarium, or niches, are becoming more popular than traditional burial, burials. I think they're also a lot more affordable, so families are more inclined to, uh, use the columbarium. So, we need to, uh, put in another columbarium, and those funds actually come out of the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund, and then, uh, that fund then gets reimbursed with the sales of those spaces.
Any questions? Uh, Ms. Pirros?
That is a great question. That is, the cremains or urns are placed in a stone structure above ground. I had that question a lot when I first cut cemetery.
Is the, is the, you've got this, it's actually a, uh, a $110,000 project, but you're, you're, you're going to, you're asking for 55 here, and you, there, there are donations of 55,000. Uh, how, are, how sure are you about the donation?
Um, the, the, I think you're combining the two columbariums. They're two separate structures, two separate projects. Uh, they're not connected. Uh, the Veterans Council is a separate one. Uh, they're the ones fundraising in, in Lake. Uh, obviously, they got to raise the money before we can even build it or construct it. Uh, the other one is 55. That's going to come out of the Perpetual Care Fund.
And what's the balance of the perpetual care fund, do you know?
About 235,000.
Oh. Any other questions? Thank you. We'll move on. Next up is Communications.
And, and, excuse me. I think Andy had a question. Oh, I think he raised his hand. Hopefully I caught it.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, Andy. I didn't see you. Go ahead.
No worries. Just a, just for clarification on my end here, when they're talking about the, um, road maintenance, we've got it for '24, '25, and then '27, and nothing for '26 and '28. How confident are we that we're not going to have to maintain those roads in those two years in '26 and '28?
Uh, we've been doing an every-other-year approach, uh, but last year we pushed it back to this year, so that's kind of why we're at a back-to-back. So, and this year, 2023, it got pushed to 2024. So we do it every other year, pretty much for our road maintenance.
Sweet, thank you.
No other questions? We'll move on to, what was it, Communications?
Um, oh, oh, are you before me? I'm sorry. The, C is before D. Well, I was looking at the wrong list. And I made fun of the alphabet earlier. Come on up here.
Okay, you've got 13 and 13A, so take your pick.
All right, since I'm up here and it's on autopilot, uh, we'll talk about communications. Um, we're, uh, asked, requesting 100,000, and, uh, this would be workspace, uh, for the communications director, uh, and the specialist, including the studio, and equipment space for Marshfield Broadcasting. Uh, you may ask why now. I'll give you a little bit, a little bit of insight on that. Uh, the current lease, uh, over at, uh, City Hall, we've had it for almost now five years. It ends on March 31st of 2024. That costs us, uh, $1,386 a month now. Uh, 1,660 square feet is what we have, and we're located on the fifth floor, the old, uh, city clerk's office. Uh, the new rate, if we do decide to stay there for an additional five years, we'd have to sign another five-year lease. Um, and that rate would go up three and a half percent at, uh, $1,434.51 a month, costing us annually of $17,214, and then over four, over five years, $86,000, about $86,000. Uh, the utilities are all paid, uh, except for cleaning and basic maintenance that we do over there. Um, just, uh, as an example, uh, when the public access stations was contracted out before we started Communications Department, uh, the city paid $36,000, uh, a year, plus $4,000 annually, so that was $40,000 annually. So, you definitely can see there was a, a savings in moving over to the old city hall, so that gives you an idea there. Uh, real quickly, uh, currently, uh, reasons why we want to do is there's no security over there. Uh, now, there is now drug testing, uh, on our floor. Uh, a lot of changes have been happening. Uh, there's going to be more tenants in there. Uh, we don't have anybody up front, so we are the first office that, uh, patrons stop and say, "Where do I go?" And we're getting up and down, uh, from our offices at pretty constant rate, uh, not very efficient. So, we just don't have any other way of doing that. At this point, we have no camera equipment or security like, like other departments have. Uh, windows are leaking, as you, if you remember from previous being in that building, and, uh, our studio is very small. It's our makeshift in the old vault. Uh, tough to work in and really hard to move, uh, equipment in and out, and it's almost a, a liability for the, for us because of moving things in and out of a small door on a daily basis. And our wiring is very old. Uh, but what I mean by wiring is our, our internet, our connection over here, while within the building, is about 25 years old. It was never replaced, so we were holding onto that, but it reduces our, our ability to get, uh, files over here at the city hall. So, real quickly, uh, three options, just so you have these three options that we have. Uh, option one is moving in the basement of this city hall. Um, uh, we would have to, uh, work out a visitor, uh, policy. We don't, we kind of have one through our contractors, but this would require, if we did, would require our guests, uh, that come to the studio, our guests that, uh, David and I, uh, use, and, uh, possibly if we, uh, allow the community producers to produce, they would have their own guests. Uh, that's a small, very small amount. The main piece that we invite people in is, uh, for other programs that David and I produce, even though there might be another host involved. Um, so, uh, we've been looking at, talking with, uh, various staff here, including our, our maintenance, and Tom Turchi is a head of building. Um, so, uh, right now, we're just in that phase. There is space downstairs, uh, currently. Uh, it's IT space that's used for data processing. Uh, two individuals there that probably could move out into another space and then move some other material. There is quite a bunch of old, uh, files and stuff, but files are, are being transferred now digitally, so that can hopefully be moved out. Um, item two, we looked at the community center, uh, the hocking room, and, uh, and also using a room that's right next to it was, was the exercise room. Um, I worked with Justin Kasperson. Uh, he, uh, looked to see what the cost would, because if we used the exercise room as our offices, uh, we would have to build something for the seniors' exercise. And we looked at the, the open space over by the, the wall, the veterans' wall. Uh, well, we found out that, uh, it would cost about $225,000, uh, quite, quite steep. And, uh, the 100,000 again is coming from our fund, uh, but where would we get the other 125? So, right now, uh, we put that on the back burner, and there's some structural things that we would have to see if that would work anyway in regarding to lighting in the hocking room, uh, but it's still on the table. Uh, number three would be UWSP for the, would be possible. We did reach out, uh, I reached out to Michelle before she had left, a while back about it, uh, interested, but again, we would have to pay rent, even though we do own those buildings. Um, maybe there's something with the county that could be worked out. I don't know. Uh, there's space over there, but it's, it's pretty, pretty outdated. Uh, I, I, I don't think it would be the place to go for the communication part of what we're trying to do. Um, even the public access and, and keeping David and I separate would be really difficult, be running back and forth, so. But it is a number three, and that's about what I have right now. There's really no other place. We all talked about different buildings and stuff, but it just, just isn't there. So, that's where I'm at, is asking 100,000, uh, in 2024 because of the end of the lease.
Mr. Sauber?
So one of the things I always think about, and thanks for the presentation, Tom, um, is, uh, your mission and execution of the mission, strategic plan, and how, how, you know, these, um, plans support the overall strategy. You've named four possible locations. Um, you've got $100,000, uh, set aside, uh, for '24. A few questions. You know, as far as executing your mission, um, where, where would be the ideal location? And then two, um, I don't think the hocking building was designed to, to be, um, you know, used for like a permanent, um, tenant, I'll say. Uh, I thought, I thought it was more of a, you know, a, a conference room type thing that, that organizations could use. So I, I, I was kind of surprised to hear you say that as an option. And then the other quest, the final question is, um, you know, you mentioned in the basement of the city hall, current city hall. I don't know the basement layout, but how far would that 100,000 dollars get you if that were the highest best use for what you do?
Okay, well, let me take, uh, the city hall here in this basement. Um, we feel right now that's our best option. Um, we don't have any price at this point in time. Uh, just talk and see if that's possible to do. Um, there, we would want to remove part of the ceiling up there, uh, remove some walls that were put in when we came here. They are fake walls to make some, uh, area. We also need to see if IT can move into our current exercise area that's really not utilized. Uh, that would be used for our data processing, uh, and as well as IT equipment. Uh, so, but I do feel that the 100,000 could do this. It depends on, it all depends on if we need to change our access points for the public, or is, can we shapron somebody down there? That's where the costs has come, and then the elevator is way at the other end, and we do have people that use the elevator currently now. So, those are things that have to be really figured out, and probably have to be a policy. But right now, I favor this building, and also because the mission, not public access, and I call it public access, Marshall Broadcasting are two different pieces. Uh, we know we do communications, and we do that other part. Mainly, that other part is, uh, the communication part is really my forte. That's all the news releases and working with city department heads and leadership here. And, uh, getting the word out about city, uh, city business, uh, through, and I think that's, really needs to be here. Uh, this is the headquarters, and, uh, I think if, if we were, being off-site is very difficult for that portion of what we do. Public access is a bit different, or a bit way different, um, although there's a government channel, but it's still public access. So, I, I would say, uh, here, and, uh, as in the, the hocking room, and I believe Justin, I have that room right, right, the hocking room. We chose, I mean, it's really, there's not a lot of room over there. It's all used, and Justin probably, and he does use that room now. So it's probably something he really don't want to get rid of, because it's used for like tax aid and other things, and, um, but that's really all we could find. Now, we, there's a job center over there, and that's the other piece I forgot to mention is, you know, you got to figure out the job center. That could be the offices, but then where does the job center go? Because they do pay us rent, and they do have a contract, uh, through, uh, I believe, March of 2024 as well here. And that's another thing of, that's funded here by our, by you guys. So, um, City Hall would be my recommendation. I have provided, uh, Steve Barge as well as Sarah. About 15 different municipalities that use City Hall for both their, uh, public access and, uh, um, communication services and how they go about it. And everyone has a little bit different, but that's our next step. But right now, I, I favor City Hall, and I think that's going to be our least cost unless we went to the community center and use the hocking room and, uh, probably the job center, but it's not ideal.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, go ahead, please. Derek?
Hey, Tom. Um, it sounds like none of these, uh, are like the perfect setup for you guys right now. Is, has there been any thought put into potentially splitting the offices and the studio, although I know not ideal? Would it be beneficial to maybe office, like here, and then studio somewhere else? Even thinking, you mentioned the UW at one point, like, I don't know if there's any potential for collaboration with the UW in terms of like internships at the studio, uh, things like that, where maybe there could be compromises made with the rent instead?
Yeah, those are very good, uh, observations, is, because I, you know, I, I feel the same for the, for the Marshall Broadcasting. We want to get students involved. Basically, it is, it's a makerspace. Uh, we've been a makerspace for 20-some years. Uh, just never was called that. That's really what it, what public access, they're really called now community media centers. That's really what it, what public access, they're really called now community media centers. We don't really refer to it as that. But yeah, I, I, it can be done. Now, when we first came here, we, we did have a room. We actually were in the old conference room where committees took place at Old City Hall. That worked out so-so. Not as good, not even close to what we have now. It's a little bit, it's professional, a little bit better, studio oriented, rather than a room, makeshift room. We could be going back to a makeshift room. So yes, it's not ideal. It was a little difficult. Both my colleague and myself were here at city hall when we first started, and then it changed because of COVID, and we ended up there. We did share the studio and had kind of a storage and had stuff here. Unfortunately, it didn't work out really well. The communication was tough, and we were back and forth and moving equipment across the street. So it can be yes and no, but I, I favored not to do that because it's, you want to tie in networking is the other thing, and a lot of our equipment for our studio is all networked back here to city hall.
Okay. Yes, go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. Tom, I'm going to go back to the beginning of it. You had mentioned when we subcontracted this out, rent was forty thousand a year. Were they placed in the facilities or where did they operate out of?
We, they actually, oh, they rented a facility on McMillan, and it was a, a studio they had since about, I believe, two thousand and seven. I looked at the price and that was about in twenty seventeen. I had to go back to records to see what that cost was. It was lower, but it's, it was going up. And the lease actually ended in twenty nineteen in April or May, or somewhere in there of twenty nineteen. And that's when we moved it over here. That was part of the, the deal to save some money, so we could have a communications department under the, under the city's umbrella. So yeah, it was a lot of money, but a very nice place. I mean, I'm not saying that it was, it was top of the line, a great studio. I just didn't have a chance to ever work in there. I'd love to, but the cost was too high.
Yeah, that makes sense. I will comment that I think from a logical perspective, city hall would probably be the most logical approach to it. I know there will be some challenges, but getting out of paying rent and within a five-year cycle to be able to turn that around and put us neutral on it is a pretty, pretty good turnaround on it. So that's all I really had to mention.
Okay. Yeah, eighty-six thousand in five years, a lot of money. And, you know, we're, we'd be looking to use that or keep it within our fund, which is a relapse, and it stays within the fund and helpful there. But thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, I got something. If, anybody else over there? Anybody over here? Maybe Jennifer, Jennifer's going to have to help on this, but this, the money that you're planning on spending for this is from the fund balance of the Communications Capital Improvement Fund. How much is in there? Have you got enough money to cover some of these other more expensive options?
We do. I was actually, well, I was talking to Jordan. We're, you know, if we'd used the whole hundred, it would deplete it pretty far down. So that would give us no flexibility.
Is sort of a vague number.
Yeah, it's about one, what did we say, about one thirty? One fifty right now is where we're at, is what you said, John?
When, when that place on McMillan was, was originally built, they had saved up a lot of money in that, that fund. They spent a little over two hundred and fifty thousand on that, that building on McMillan. And I, I remember that very well. It was, it was a, it was, that was a great studio. It was a really perfect place. But I, I'm concerned that the hundred thousand isn't going to be enough, and you're going to have to find either an additional source of funding or basically curtail some services, to, to give up some services or give up some things so that you don't have to spend as much money on the, the, the studio again. I mean, that's, that's a hard choice, but I mean, that's, that's what you may come to. It depends, but we'll see.
Yeah, and I, I did provide a little bit of information is if we had to change in how we, we, we do certain business with, with the producers that unfortunately then we may not be allowing them to use the studio. For some reasons, it may be, but we'll have to figure that out. I think we really need to do is come back to group here and see where it goes and if it's a cost. So if it stays within the CIP right now, then that's what we need to do is do some more homework.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Tom.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Steve, you're up for development services.
Thank you. And I want to make a comment before I do, something I meant to say at the very beginning under my opening comments, especially for those of you who might be newer. You might look at some of these projects, you see cemetery road maintenance, you know, fifteen thousand or some of these things. You might wonder what constitutes a capital project that we put on this list. We used to be, it had to be strictly a quote capital project. A couple of years ago, we, we modified that to include what we called major purchases. And we, we set a threshold of anything that's ten thousand dollars or more and five-year useful life or more. So anything you see on this, we're at least making the statement that it's at least ten thousand dollars, but you can see the number, but that it will have a useful life of five years or more. And that does include some things that didn't used to be on this list in the old days, like technology, you know, servers or whatever. But we feel as larger dollar purchases, we need to find some way to account for them, and so we incorporate them into this plan. Development Services, they have four items. The first one is a downtown facade program, which began back in two thousand and nine. It's hard to believe. It's been almost fifteen years. Very successful program. Roughly the first decade, the money came from tax increment district number four, our downtown TIF district. That, the expenditure period ran out on that district in twenty eighteen. So for the last few years, the Economic Development Board has been funding it out of the two oh five fund, and usually around sixty to seventy thousand dollars. So what you see here is another seventy thousand dollars slated for twenty twenty-four. You might wonder why there's not more money shown in the future years. Every year, there seems to be conversation about whether or not we're going to continue to fund this program. I think based on the idea that over the past fifteen years, we, we've helped so many buildings be upgraded, but it always seems like there's more new applicants. We just opened another round of funding. There's seventy thousand dollars in, in the fund for twenty twenty-three. We, I've just received a request today, and there's a couple more bubbling up. So we may end up with three or four applicants before we're done, and it seems like the monies usually go out the door eventually. But a great program for us though, because for every dollar we expend, we usually get about three dollars, roughly somewhere around there, of private investment to improve these buildings, you know, because the, the grant only pays for fifty percent, and oftentimes the, the, the cost is higher, and we don't even get to the fifty percent mark. The next item is Wenzel Family Plaza Programming, and that's thirty-five thousand dollars again, just for twenty twenty-four. I'll explain the lack of numbers for twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-eight in a second here. But it used to be where we had the, the Economic Development Board providing fifty thousand dollars and means, I'm sorry, Visit Marshfield, formerly the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the other fifty thousand dollars. When we made Nikki Anderson, a staff person, brought her in under the public, or the Parks and Recreation Department, we kind of changed that a little bit, and we went to thirty-five thousand dollars annual contribution instead of the fifty. So that'll be for twenty twenty-four. In twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-eight, we show, or through twenty twenty-seven, I should say, we show a hundred thousand dollars for EDB special projects. No specific items are called up because there's no specific ideas. Every year, the EDB comes up with things that they really want to look at doing. Sometimes it's updating a plan. Sometimes it's putting money toward a project that they don't otherwise have in their budget. Having said that, if you look at the fact we don't have any money budgeted in twenty-five and beyond for Wenzel Family Plaza Programming and the facade program, that may be where a fair amount of those monies go if those programs continue. The last one is the Affordable Housing Program. I know we've talked about this with council, maybe not to the newer members who are here, but there is a state law that says that when you close a TIF district, as you, as you're closing a TIF district, you can for one year capture some dollars from that district that's closing and put it toward affordable housing. So we're expecting to close twenty, District Five, Mill Creek Business Park for expenditures in twenty twenty-four as we, we close that one out. And then, actually, we've closed the expenditure period. We're looking at closing the district in twenty twenty-four, and then hopefully the industrial park a few years later. We've had a lot of talk at the council level about what is affordable housing? It's a, it's a term that's hard to get your arms around. The cost of housing continues to rise. What was considered affordable housing, days gone by. I mean, we've had a developer here as recent as nine months ago tell us that you can't build much of a house for under three hundred thousand dollars anymore. So the bar has definitely been raised on what would be considered that type of home. Sometimes you hear phrases like workforce housing or other, other ways of saying it. But we want at least keeping to the possibility that we can do that. And again, this would not be funded through EDB. It would be funded through those tax increment dollars if we were to try that. We'd be leveraging those monies for affordable housing. So those are the items under Development Services for the next five years, and I would take any questions from council.
Okay, Natasha?
Thank you. And Tom, I just wanted to say that that was a really, did Tom leave? That was a really good presentation. Oh, he's behind it. Okay, so I am wondering if we, when do we need to decide that we are going to use that extra year of TIF funding for affordable housing? Do we have a deadline when you have to make that decision?
You know, I'd, I'd have to look at the, the way the TIF law is written. Jennifer and I have talked about this before. I just know that there's that one-year window. You know, and again, we're expecting the district to close in, in, I think in twenty twenty-four now. It sounds like that's, that's likely. So we can look into that and get back to, we have, we have, you know, another TIF district, TIF District thirteen that's mixed use that we also have as a possibility for helping to fund projects, but, you know, we'll find out more about how we could use these dollars and see if there's a way to, to go toward it. Again, we are going to have this joint meeting soon, I, I promise, with the EDB and the council. And I think a discussion about where affordable housing ranks and our priorities compared to other types of residential development that we're hoping to spur on. And, and again, what constitutes affordable housing in twenty twenty-three is a little bit nebulous.
Right. So I guess when we do have, I think it's really important that we do have that meeting soon, because we were waiting for the full council, so now we have a new council. Even June would be great.
I'd look for it then.
Yeah, and then the, so two of the questions would be, when do we have to say, okay, we are using this money? And when does it have to be spent by? And then can we at that meeting have a definition of what a affordable housing is? Can we get Josh or one of our consultants to come up and say, for Marshfield, this is affordable housing? Otherwise, we, we don't know what we're doing.
The first part of that is probably easier than the second part, I think, in working with finance staff and looking at the TIF law through Wisconsin statutes. We can nail down that timeline and how we would be able to use those, those funds if we chose to do so. Stephen Wiley, when he was here, a former city planner, said he had come across at one point a definition of affordable housing. It was based upon an individual's percentage of their, their income or family income, and that it was calculatable. I know that's not really a word, but I just made it up. Sounded good though for a minute. But, but, but the broader sense of what people are trying to spur on when they talk about affordable housing is, is, but your view of it might be very different than Mike's. But I'll, I'll check with the state. We'll see if they, there's a more understood definition. If Stephen's right, though, it is based on some percentage of a person's, and again, we have to find out what the, what the updated. I know Ed, at one point, you had the median income.
Sixty, between sixty and a hundred and twenty percent of median income for that municipality.
Okay, but you know.
It'd be only sixty percent of, it's about fifty-four thousand is the median income for the city of Marshfield. It's the range from sixty to a hundred and twenty percent of that. That was, that's what they defined it on. That's what a lot of communities, O'Clara is using that, and O'Clara is also using, they've given up on new construction as a way to provide affordable housing.
Yeah.
And what they're doing, they're doing something entirely different, which is really great. And I'll be happy to discuss that with the, the council when we, when we meet on it, maybe, maybe in June.
If it's really true, what a couple of developers said, including the one that came to us back in, you know, summer of twenty twenty-two, that you really can't build much of a house anymore for under three hundred thousand, it's, it's a challenge.
Like I said, they've given up on, on that new construction for, for that very same reason.
Well, I would just request that when we do have that meeting, that we have a definition, because then we can actually move forward in the meeting.
Got it.
Mr. Stoller?
Next action step then is what? To defer this topic to EDB for further discussion or what?
You're talking about the affordable housing?
Yes.
No, I think that's a conversation for the EDB and council together when they meet.
Yeah, that's going to be in June, too.
And, you know, you, you weren't here last year, obviously, on the, on the body, but there was a lot of discussion about this as part of a project that was talked about in the twenty-first and Washington area, and I, I think that we need to resurrect that and determine what it is. You know, picture a dartboard on the wall. What are we throwing at? You know, what, what type of housing are we trying to create with our, the number of bullets we have to do so?
Derek, go ahead.
Hey, Steve. Just a quick question, just for my own clarity, as I was trying to read through and understand it. I feel like my brain's just not working. The two Wenzel Plaza programs are projects, six zero two one, is that for physical work at Wenzel? And then six zero two seven is for like, like programming, like events?
Six zero two one is the only Wenzel Family Plaza programming item. That's the thirty-five thousand dollar contribution that we make toward, you know, the, the securing of, of what we get out there in terms of, you know, act, I'll call them acts, you know, performers, whatever, and some of the other things that go on. Although we are looking for sponsorship, I don't know if we've gotten very far with sponsorship yet over the years. The other item is, is special projects for the EDB, and that could be housing, that could be anything. That, that's not necessarily tied to Wenzel Family Plaza at all.
I just saw it in the justification, and that's where I was like, I feel like my brain's not working on this, so I just wanted some clarity.
Yeah, you know, there, there's been a hope, and, and I, you know, I haven't talked much with Justin. I see he's coming up here, or Nikki. I mean, there's been a hope over time that, that we would be able to get sponsorships that would help defray some of the costs of, of the, the, the operation, the programming for Wenzel Family Plaza. But that's a hard goal. I'm not sure how that's progressed.
I want to clear up the thirty-five thousand that's in there. That's, that's Nikki's wages and benefits. So eighty percent of her wages and benefits are covered by Visit Marshfield and EDB. Twenty percent is covered by the city. All of the programs or activities that are conducted by her are funded by sponsorship, so she goes out and finds sponsors. So if we want a band, we got to find those dollars for that band to pay for that band. So if we want really good bands, we got to raise a lot of money. If we want really bad bands, we don't get a lot of money. So she's doing a really good job of fundraising. Various committed donors over the years, from the beginning, have given to it. But that thirty-five thousand is actually for her wages and benefits. So without it, the city would either have to absorb it or we cut it, which means we would probably lose her as well as the programming at that facility.
Mike, go ahead.
Did I hear you correctly that that thirty-five thousand is only twenty percent of her wages and benefits?
No, it's about forty percent. So eighty percent is covered by Visit Marshfield as well as EDB, and then twenty percent is covered by us, the city. So it's a cooperative partnership program between three entities. That pays for all her wages, not the programming itself. That's through sponsorship dollars.
So, so why is it on CIP? It's just for wages?
It's just a committed through the EDB program. That's how it's reflected in the budget. That's a great question. I don't think I have an answer for.
Sounds like it could come off.
Okay.
Yeah, I do apologize. I, I mean, I know that breakdown. I just, you know, you look at what we pay and we put, but Visit Marshfield pays it. I didn't realize it was thought of in that exact way for, you know, her salary. Anything else?
Anybody? If not, we're going to take a little detour on our plan here. We're going to ask Tony Andrews from the university to come up and make his presentation from the university. Tony, the mic phones all yours, and yeah, welcome, yeah, welcome to your first CIP, and we've promised to be gentle.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So we had a UW Commission meeting, Marshfield, about a week ago, and confirmed the CIP for the next few years. You'll see some things that may be a little bit different, and just in terms of what we proposed this year for the new fiscal year and things that we proposed in the past. We may have had the tennis courts up there a little bit and maybe thought about that. But again, we have a facility that is, of course, supported by Wood County and, of course, the city of Marshfield that is, in a lot of ways, fifty years old. We have buildings that have not been maintained, or I should say, not been maintained in such a way, like the rooftops, that we would have resurfacing and new roofs placed on these buildings. So some of the structures are just that old. So at this point, given the Wisconsin weather, which I'm now starting to get used to, and the age of the buildings, there are some repairs that need to be done. Starting within the next fiscal year, we need to replace the roof over the lead stairwell. We have a leak there now, and that roof hasn't been replaced since he's been there. So we have to take that. So we move that up this year, which will be ninety-five thousand dollars contributed by the city and the county. And then, of course, we have the sidewalk and the parking lots. We had a brutal winter, or maybe I just thought it was brutal because I've come from New York. Maybe this is a typical Wisconsin winter. Maybe this is a typical Wisconsin winter. But it has really impacted our driveways and of course, not just our rooftops, our buildings, but our pathways also. So we've asked for that to be moved up this year for ninety-five thousand dollars. So with that, we've asked for a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in the new fiscal year. The next fiscal years, we're gonna take on the things that we talked about in the past, some of the things that we put into the five-year capital plan, such as the abridum, of course, um, the drainage structures and the trail surfaces. And, um, also, we're talking about the air handling unit in the theater, the connector building, which is connects these rail stem buildings to the other buildings. We need roof replacement there. And then we have the upper commons and the lead entrance, new flooring, which we had moved up a little bit, but now we pushed it back. It's not as important as making sure that we have a roof over our heads, of course. And then we talk about the tennis court improvements, which we'd like to be able to use at some point in the future, maybe for pickleball. So since this is now a big thing, especially in Marshfield, it'd be nice if we can get in on this, uh, getting the tennis courts fixed up so people can not just play pickleball in the gymnasium, but outside in the summertime. And then lastly, we have in the two thousand and twenty-seven fiscal year, uh, replacing the rooftops for the connector building, of course. So this is all stuff that we've approved with the UW Commission, and now we come to the city and ask the city to, uh, support us in these endeavors, of course, with the cities half. Since half comes to the city and half comes to the county. Questions?
Any questions? Derek.
Hey, Tony, I had one, I know, I was at a mission meeting. Uh, I'm, maybe I'm wrong, but I, I, from what I was hearing you saying about the proposals for the upcoming fiscal years, I don't think that's matching what's in the CIP docs, right?
Oh. Okay, I know, all right.
That's what Tony was saying at the beginning. Uh, you guys had a meeting last week, and I was already kind of working to finalize this. I, I will add a break here, and I apologize for this. I will go make copies of, of what he, what he just read to us. It's, um, similar in some spots, different in other spots, and you're on, you're on the commission, so you know that.
Yep.
But that's why, that's why the difference.
Cool, thank you. Just wanted some clarity for at least-
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, that's what I was saying initial, Derek, uh, just to make sure everybody know we changed some things a little bit around in the UW Commission because we had needs with some of these things. Um, the tennis courts is not as important as having a leak in the, over the, uh, of course, the, where we have the O'Clare, um, program at. So we moved some of this stuff up, moved stuff around. In general, it's the same thing, but we've just moved some things around for priority reasons. Thanks, Derek.
And of course, you, you did emphasize that the county will be paying half of everything.
Absolutely.
So, so what you're seeing here is half. Yes. Yeah. Staubert.
Uh, might be a question for Parks and Rec, but there used to be some type of, uh, an agreement with tennis courts. I think there were three courts in town and, and they would alternate, um, renovation of those tennis courts as funds were available. Is that still in place?
We're gonna start talking. We haven't met yet, um, but we are gonna meet, we're gonna talk about this some more. Jump in.
There's, uh, four courts at the university. Uh, we typically don't get involved in like the capital improvements of those courts, just the ones at Oak Avenue and as well as, uh, Brain Park. Uh, so there's no program in place that I'm aware of in the last ten years in which there was a rotation of dollars to help fix those.
That help you? Anybody else? I think we're done, so they're, thanks for your presentation, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all very much. And, uh, if I'm allowed, then I'll leave and, okay, make sure.
And we don't have any cops to keep you here, so don't worry.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll pick up where we left off. So next up is emergency medical services. Chief Liddy.
Thank you. Um, all these projects before you are, well, ambulance replacements and equipment that's on the ambulances, um, more the, more expensive medical equipment that we have to replace. I want to commend DC Bacis, he did a good job. He got all this equipment on a replacement schedule, so, uh, we're not getting hit hard in any single year. Um, with that, I can walk through the projects with you. In 2024, we have a cardiac monitor, uh, for fifty thousand dollars. Uh, also a patient cot for thirty-three thousand dollars. In 2025, we have a Lucas device. So a Lucas device, in case you're not aware what that is, it's a cardiac compression device that we have on all the ambulances. It does perfect CPR. Uh, we initially had three of those donated to us, but we now have five of those, so we're keeping those on a rotation every three years. Um, also in 2025, we have extrication tools. The extrication tools that we currently have, uh, we're moving over to battery, um, systems instead of gas powered. Uh, they're more reliable, um, easier to maintain. So, uh, that's one of the things we're doing with that. That's forty thousand dollars in 2025. In 2026, that's a bigger year for us. Uh, we have an ambulance replacement, ambulance ninety-nine, uh, for three hundred and fifty thousand, and that's a, a rough guess. We all know what equipment's doing nowadays, especially the vehicles, so. And along with that, in 2026 then, uh, is the new power, uh, power load system for the cots. Um, that's part of the, uh, purchase of that ambulance as well. Uh, 2026, we have a transport ventilator. Uh, DC Bacis and I have, have talked a little bit about this since we are, um, uh-
Advanced.
Downgrading our critical care licenses may get pulled, but it's a little ways out there, uh, yet on, on, on the horizon, so we're gonna discuss that a little bit. We would still like to keep a transport ventilator in service. Also in 2027, we have another cardiac monitor EC for fifty-three thousand. And another patient cot in 2027 for thirty-seven thousand. And again, back to the Lucas device in 2028 for twenty-five thousand. And extrication tools again for forty-four thousand in 2028. So like I said, this is all on a, basically a three-year rotation. Um, all this equipment is stored on the ambulance, so we have five ambulances. So we're keeping all this equipment for fifteen years. In general, um, this equipment's generally good for eight to ten years is what the life expectancy is, but, uh, what we've done is, uh, uh, DC Bacis implemented a maintenance plan for all this equipment, so we're able to keep it a little bit longer. Um, so it's annual maintained professionally. So again, so we can keep it for pretty much, uh, another third of its life, and we've had success with that. So I'll take any questions you have.
Natasha.
I do appreciate how you all have a cycle. It's actually quite impressive. So that's wonderful. Um, I have two questions. One, you just said we may be downgrading. Uh, what were you talking about?
Yeah, so our critical care, uh, license, um, that's already moved through, uh, Police and Fire Commission approved it. What, what that means is, is, um, we wouldn't be able to take those, and you might have to help me with this one, DC Bacis, uh, those more, um, intensive, um, transfers. But I'll let DC Bacis explain that a little bit further.
Yeah, just for clarification, so EMS in the state, critical care paramedic is the highest level you have. Uh, the state does not consider going from critical care paramedic to paramedic a downgrade. It's still a paramedic level. What we are gonna be dropping is, uh, some of the higher-level inter-facility transports. So when we first took this on, again, twenty seventeen, thank you, uh, the inter-facility transports, as the council knows, we, we took a lot of them. In the last several years, those transports have gone down. Uh, for, I guess, uh, the benefit of the patients that we serve, the additional equipment, the additional training, it really isn't worth it for us to maintain critical care. So the, um, Police and Fire Commission has agreed that when our license is up, which should be later this year, we're gonna be going to paramedic level.
Thank you. I have one more question. Correct me if I'm wrong, did we, I just remember last year asking why we didn't, we would do CIP and we would do long-term debt for police cars, oh, police, yeah, but we wouldn't do it for ambulances. So is this new? Are we doing this now, or is this not new?
No, this isn't new. This has always been part of the, um, the enterprise fund CIP process.
Mike?
This one's a little off-topic from CIP, but I'd just like to see if we can get an update. If I recall, you guys were applying for some grants for help. Have we seen anything on that, or have you heard anything? Just curious.
For-
I think it was to pay for employees for three years or something?
Yeah, that's, that's a safer grant, so, uh, that's gonna be coming up in August. I'll have a little more on that, on that CIP process for fire too, so, yep.
Derek?
Chief Liddy, um, just the, uh, extrication tools, I just wanted to make sure, I was understanding the, it sounds like we have four sets that are aging. So is the forty thousand in 2025, is that for just one set at a time, or is that?
That's just for one set, uh, yeah. It's fairly pricey.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? I got one, okay, this, the source of funds for this is the EMS fund, or should I say the infamous EMS fund? Are we sure we're gonna have the money to do this? Uh, with, with the, uh, well, last, we, we had a hole to fill of, we had, we were basically aimed with IOUs, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, are we gonna be able to cover these, these expenses with just that EMS money?
From what I understand and talking to Jordan, Jordan, I'm looking right at you just so you know, um, our, our account's doing much, much better, uh, Alderperson Wagner. Um, and if you remember, we cut three staff out of that budget, uh, last year. So, I mean, and this stuff has been in there every year, um, so it's nothing really new. Um, but the account's doing a lot, lot better, from what I understand. Jordan, I'm still looking at you.
Basically, are we having a, all right, are we, what, what's making it go better? Are we having a better reimbursement rate? What, what, what difference is, is, is making it happen that, that is-
Yeah.
We don't, so we don't have a surprise later on?
I don't think it's reimbursement rate. Um, that's pretty much stayed the same. I mean, we've seen a little bit of an increase, I think a ten percent increase in Medicare. Um, but I think it's really those three personnel that we moved or weren't allowed to refill, um, out of the EMS fund. That's, that's over three hundred thousand dollars in salary and benefits right off the top, right there. Um, the other part is, is we are busier. So with that, we collect more money, um, and obviously do a little bit better that way, so.
Ms. Spiros?
I do think too, did we, we remove the administrative fees?
Yes, good, yes, thank you. You're exactly right, yep. Oh, we didn't? Yeah. Come on up, Jordan.
All right, um, yeah, so, no, we did not. That was, that was budgeted for 2023 to come out of the EMS fund. Yes, the, both, both administrative fees, so the stuff that LifeQuest charges us for billing, plus the involvement that we have as far as all staff, admin, IT, finance, everybody that's involved from that end, um, comes out of the EMS fund. It comes out of the wastewater fund as well, because it's basically those enterprise funds reimbursing the general fund for our time in, in involvement, even my being here right now. So, um, so that's the idea and why. Um, but is it, is it going better? Is the fund performing better? Yes, yes. And the great reason is, is because we have three hundred thousand dollars less of expenses in that fund every single, from last year basically, and this year. Um, it performed admirably last year, even given the, um, gigantic swing in the, uh, bad debt allowance that we had to put on there, which was unfortunate, but it, it's still performed well. It's performing well right now. Um, so as Chief is explaining, it's doing great. Can I give you a crystal ball to say, yes, are we gonna have as much money for everything that's on this list? I, I can't give you a certainty on that. Um, but I can say that the, the fund right now is performing, uh, if I had a rough number, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar worth of gain right now at this moment, um, but I'm not sure where it's gonna end at. So, this year only.
I'll pass on that.
So.
Go ahead, go ahead. Natasha?
I feel like I'm remembering with Mrs. Spiros, I, I feel like we voted to remove the administrative fees, but I cannot remember what meeting that would have been.
It was talked, uh, talked about heavily, why we do it, should we continue? But there was no vote on that because it was not removed from the budget, so we entered it into the 2023 budget.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Chief. Next up is engineering.
And now that I got you for the rest of the evening, um, the first project we have on the list, I'm gonna try to move the little thing here, is, uh, West Fifth Street from Chestnut to Oak Avenue, a reconstruction project. It's an STP urban funded project. It's an eighty-twenty split, split for construction. So eighty percent of the funding comes to the federal and state, and twenty percent is city. Um, in twenty-four, we have fifty thousand for engineering services, and in twenty-five, sixty thousand. Um, we have seventy-five thousand in twenty-five for land acquisition. And in twenty-six, when construction is slated, we have two hundred and twenty-five thousand and fifty thousand for, uh, the, the street construction and water main and services. Uh, so the total expenditure for this is four hundred and sixty thousand for one point two-two million dollar, uh, improvement to the city of Marshfield. The next project is the Lincoln Avenue project from Fifth to Adder Road reconstruction project. We have a hundred thousand dollars in 2024 for this, but we are actually constructing this project starting in July of this year. Uh, the one hundred thousand is, we usually get billed from the DOT for our portion because this is also an eighty-twenty split, an STP urban project that we won. And, uh, their billing is typically a little bit behind, so we, we budget for that. Um, we are looking at a citywide traffic modeling and analysis for a hundred thousand dollars in 2027, and the last time we did a, uh, analysis of the entire city was two thousand and eight. Uh, sidewalk annual ordered repairs. Uh, we budget monies every, uh, year for this. Uh, in twenty-four, we have thirty-three thousand, twenty-five, thirty-five thousand, twenty-six, thirty-five thousand, twenty-seven, thirty-five thousand, and twenty-eight, forty thousand.
Could we ask questions as he's presenting?
Go right ahead.
If Tom doesn't mind, I'll-
Yeah, because you've got a long list, and I'd rather catch you while it's fresh.
Yeah.
Then you, go ahead.
So what is the, uh, two questions? Um, what, what is the outcome of the, uh, traffic modeling? And, um, it's a big ticket item, but it, you know, it's further down the road. And then the word ordered under sidewalk annual ordered repairs. I know at one point, we had interns going around the city and marking sidewalks that were too high or cracked too many times. And, but I thought the cost of the replacement or repair fell upon the resident. I'm kind of surprised the, the funds here, so explain that for me.
Well, in any project like this, even like in a, a street reconstruction project where we do special assessments, we budget the whole thing because we don't know if we're gonna get paid right away. So in the instance here, um, we've been doing a lot more safe step repairs in the city of Marshfield, where we're actually doing, saw cutting those offset joints, and it saves a tremendous amount of money. We get a lot more work done. Uh, we do give the homeowner the option to do, um, major repairs themselves, but if they don't do it, then we have to complete that repair and then basically bill them back. So we have to basically have the funds to pay for it because they're, we're typically not getting that back immediately.
And, and what, uh, success do you have in recouping those funds? In other words, forcing a resident to, to work for them?
So when you go through the process of, uh, ordering repairs, there's a, a, a series of steps you go through, and when you send them the bill, if they do not pay the bill, um, it is put on the tax roll.
Rebecca, did you have a question too?
No.
Well, I'm sorry, I had, I had one other question, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Skipped over to Tom. I, between you and Steve, I gotta watch you guys. But, uh, um, the citywide traffic modeling, you said it was last done in two thousand and eight. What's the, what's the outcome of something like that? Or is that, is that tied to major street reconstruction or, or-
Basically, our traffic signal network. Basically, our traffic signal network. We have twenty-seven traffic signals in the city of Marshfield. And what we try to do is we try to do some re-timing as traffic patterns change. You could try to get things to move in a group. And if you're aware, we have a project slated for this year for SISP, which was a standalone project to do an interconnect for traffic signals, so that we can have it all interconnected, so we can understand if anything's operate, everything's operational. This would enhance that. We can reduce the number of stops. We can basically get the platoons of cars moving through. It's a way of trying to make things a little bit more environmentally friendly.
Anybody else? Oh, Derek, go ahead.
Hey, Tom, following up on the, the traffic modeling, it'll be almost twenty years at that point. Do we know, what is the frequency that other cities are doing that? And like, is that something that we should be doing more frequently than every twenty years, or?
Well, it's, it's interesting. We have done little bits and pieces here and there. Yeah, it would probably be nice to do it a little bit more frequently, but when you would take a look at budgets and how tight they've been, you know, can we live with what we have? Yeah, sometimes it's not as convenient as it should be. So we just basically are, are trying to fit it in where it fits.
Makes sense. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it was a need at that point if other cities are doing it more frequently and we're that far out. Thank you.
Anybody else? Proceed.
All right, the next one is the aerial photo and planometrics. Every five years, we work with Wisconsin and the county, and we fly the city of Marshfield, and we get new planometrics and new aerials, so we can actually use in our GIS system. By doing this, we're saving an awful lot of money, because we're doing it as statewide program right now with these.
I'm, I'm just wondering, why not satellites? You know, air photography just seems a little antiquated.
Well.
Maybe more expensive, I don't know.
It's a LiDAR. They actually fly the planes with LiDAR. We get, in the city of Marshville, we get three inch pixels. Satellites, I'm not sure you're going to get three inch pixels. But the LiDAR also gives us elevation, gives us buildings, gives us culverts. It gives us a lot of data that we use when we do our modeling for stormwater, when we're doing initial planning for various projects. We can do a lot of that right from our, our computers now. All right, so the next one is the asphalt paving program. In two thousand twenty-four, we have one point nine eight five million scheduled for that year. The following year, and this is our mill in place program and our overlay program, the following year, we have two point three million. And in two thousand twenty-six, we have two point three million. And then my next project is the traffic signal LED bulb replacement. In two thousand ten and eleven, the city of Marshfield, actually three, two thousand three and four, we installed with a grant from Focus on Energy, replaced all of our incandescent bulbs with LEDs. As these bulbs are wearing out, we have to replace them off and on and go out to various intersections. It's recommended that you replace them probably every twelve to fifteen years. So what we're doing is we're trying to get three or four intersections a year and replace those bulbs and bring them up to code. And in the same sense, we are also replacing the walk, don't walk signs. And at that time point, we're replacing them with signs that have the countdown timers on them, so now we're working on getting those completed, so. And it's just fifteen thousand dollars a year, and it's.
Mister, sir, the, Mister Barsho has a question.
If I could take a step back.
Sure.
Asphalt paving program twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. So we, we always hear the complaints about the city streets, right, especially in the spring. And I, and I think of the three priorities as safety and, and infrastructure and, you know, quality of life, right? Those are three big, and parks and records fall under quality of life. How do we arrive at those numbers for the paving programs? And is it, is it like, like kind of a defensive posture, just kind of a, to, to, you know, fill the potholes to get us through? Or is it strictly budgetary? And if it's strictly budgetary, if we were to find more funds for street repair, would, would your team be able to handle it from a, from a administrative perspective and basically doing the work?
So this program, we're not filling potholes with them. We're actually redoing streets and making the streets basically new again and getting, getting a new surface on there. So in the mill in place program, we actually pulverize the surface and then put a new three inches of asphalt on it. On the overlay program, if it's a concrete street and, and we have bad joints, like let's take use from Maple Avenue, for example, we'll take and fix those joints. The panels are in good shape. We got structure there. Let's put two inches over the top of it with bond fibers to help with the longevity and give it a new ride, ride surface. And then that pro, program, or that street, I did apply for another STP urban fund grant program. And I estimate between, I got a seventeen to thirty percent chance of getting that one. But I'm, I'm trying for some of those other grants that are out there. But basically, we're doing, trying to do three to four miles of streets a year. And that, if you take a look at the number of streets we have and the lifespan, it's, we're just about keeping up with that program.
I can just speak a, a moment to the numbers, being kind of weird, the one point nine eight five million in twenty twenty-four, and then up to two point three million in twenty twenty-five. That's, that's merely to, to, to try and adjust, to try and keep the first two years even, you know, with what we're looking to borrow. And then the final three years, you know, a little high in twenty-six, a little low in twenty-seven and twenty-eight. Tom had initially put in, I believe, two point one million for twenty twenty-four and two point two million for twenty twenty-five. So we reduced one year, added to the other year, to kind of balance out the years for the, the overall project for those first two years.
Anybody else? Okay, Tom, you can proceed.
All right, and the last part of our, well, in two thousand twenty-seven, we have two point four million budget for the asphalt paving program. And then we go to the next project, which is the Vine Avenue from second to fourth reconstruction. And we have fifteen thousand in twenty twenty-four to start design, and four hundred and thirty-five thousand for construction in twenty twenty-five on this project. The following project is also a Vine Avenue project, and this one is from fourth to fourteenth street. This one here is a STP urban funding that we just got grants for. I have it placed for construction in twenty twenty-seven. We have approximately in twenty-five and twenty-six, a hundred and eighty thousand for design. We have some land acquisition in twenty-six, and then full construction in twenty-seven for five hundred and ninety-eight thousand. So this project's also got sanitary sewer being improved, and water main will be improved on these projects. This is again an eighty-twenty split, so we're basically paying approximately eight hundred and fifty-three thousand total for a one point four eight million dollar project. The Vine Avenue Depot and Arnold reconstruction. The street is in fair, poor condition, and then sanitary sewer has some minor spot fair repairs and replacements. So that one is scheduled for twenty twenty-eight, and that is for two hundred and fifteen thousand. Fourteenth Street, Maple to Vine Avenue. Now, this project was identified last year when we discovered that the storm sewer on this street is in failing condition. It is now oblong and cracked. And we took truck traffic off of it, the board of pub works here when we discovered it. And the water utility wants to replace water main there. And our sanitary sewer is vitrified clay. Some of it has been lined, but it is over a hundred years old. So laterals are all vitrified clay on this section and a lot of lead, water surfaces. So we felt that the best option for this was to do a total reconstruct. And that's estimated at one point one six, three million, and that is scheduled for twenty twenty-four. Then the asphalt paving program for twenty twenty-eight, we have another two point four five million. And then we get into the sanitary sewer projects. We have sanitary sewer lining. This is a program where we actually can do some repairs to sanitary sewer mains without actually cutting the streets. We've done about thirty-five percent of the city this way. And it's, I figured saved about eleven million dollars over the years in street repair costs by doing the sanitary sewer lining program. And we've also reduced a great number, a great amount of infiltration into our sanitary sewer system. We typically budget a few, you know, like in twenty twenty-seven, we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted, and we'll take and bid it as like a two-year contract a lot of times to, to get as much bang for the buck out of our contracts on this. It's been a good program, and it's, it, it does help reduce construction costs. Then we had the Fifth Street, Chestnut to Oak, which is a companion project for these, the reconstruct. This is sanitary sewer replacement for a hundred thousand, a hundred and ninety-nine thousand.
Yeah.
And then we have Cedar Avenue, Eighth to Fourteenth sanitary sewer. This is a, a reconstruct, the sanitary sewer on Cedar Avenue. Basically, we're budgeting three hundred and eighty-five thousand for that. When we talk about sanitary sewer projects, these projects are being funded through utility user fees, they're not based on tax input. Walnut Avenue Depot to Blodgett sanitary sewer reconstruct. Again, that's for two thousand twenty-seven, and it's for a hundred and fifty-five thousand. And we have the Fourth Street Maple to Vine sanitary sewer reconstruct, and that is for two hundred and sixty thousand, and that's scheduled for twenty twenty-five. And the Vine Avenue for, second to fourth is a companion project with the street reconstruction project. So this one is another hundred and eighty thousand for doing sanitary sewer work on that reconstruction project. Then we have Cherry Avenue, Third to Ninth sanitary sewer reconstruction. This is scheduled for two thousand twenty-eight, and we're looking at three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for that project. And then Fourth Street Walnut to Chestnut sanitary sewer reconstruction, that's scheduled for two thousand twenty-seven at eighty thousand dollars. And the, these sanitary sewer reconstructions are typically replacing six inch vitrified clay sanitary sewer mains, which we can't line, and replacing with the minimum size, which is eight inch PVC that we use now. Arnold Street Central to Maple sanitary sewer reconstruction. That one we have scheduled for twenty twenty-eight for seventy thousand. And then the Vine Avenue Fourth to Fourteenth, this is in conjunction with the STP urban reconstruct project, and we have a total of six hundred thousand scheduled for this project for sanitary sewer replacement. And Vine Avenue Depot to Arnold sanitary sewer, we have ninety-five thousand scheduled for this, in this project in twenty twenty-eight. And Fourteenth Street Maple to Vine, this is the companion project with the reconstruction, which is scheduled for twenty twenty-four, and that again is for two hundred and ninety thousand. So that's it for the engineering. Are there any additional questions for engineering?
Natasha?
Oh, thank you. I'm just going down to page forty-nine at the bottom. Just to clarify, what's the difference between the wastewater utility, that's for when we're redoing the sanitary sewer, is that correct? So we're using their money for that?
Yes.
And then the water utility is when we're redoing the mains, like the water mains? Okay. And then lastly, you know, we're, we're taking about two to three million dollars of long-term debt to do this, which, you know, you just have to do it. But why, there's such a discrepancy between the tax levy, which seems so little at fifteen thousand? So I'm just wondering what that is.
So, and I just want to quickly clarify that when we do a street reconstruction project like this, let's say, we'll use Vine Avenue as the, the street reconstruction. The street is covered by general tax dollars. Water utility actually covers the construction of water main and services. The owner, the property owners are assessed for their portion of the water services, and that comes out of water utility fees, sanitary sewer main and sanitary sewer laterals. The property owner owns the sanitary sewer lateral from the main to the house. So the portion, we, we want to make sure the portion under the street is completely new, so that when on a reconstruction, we're not having to dig up a street a, a, a following year, because we see a collapse of a main. So they get assessed for their portion of the sanitary sewer lateral. The main is part covered under utility user fees. And so, and then storm sewer, when we do storm sewer on these projects, that is also general tax dollars.
And at a prior, a broader higher level, we used to have, you know, five, six, seven years ago, a lot of the CIP was funded, at least a, a good chunk of it with tax levy. Those dollars just don't exist anymore. So that's where you see things, even some of the projects that are on the CIP, you look at, you think, is that really a capital project? Couldn't that have incorporated some other way or paid for, even in the CIP with tax levy funds as opposed to borrowed funds or some other source of revenue? That's the reason. We just don't have much extra. When we calculate the tax levy, you went through the twenty twenty-three budget, you know, to apply toward capital projects.
Mister Barsho, you had a question?
Hey, Tom, you mentioned land acquisition a couple times, like Fifth Street to Chestnut. Is that just a placeholder in case you have to purchase land, or are you actually widening the road?
We are not actually widening the road. When we bought, when we are working with a DOT project, we actually have to go through a process if we get a temporary limited easement or permanent easements and other easements that are outside of the typical right of way. So those pro, costs have to go through a different process than what we typically do in the city of Marshfield. When we do a project in the city, we usually call any type of work that we do onto the adjacent property. Let's say if we have to replace twenty feet of their driveway to make it match into ours, we call it damages. And basically, we trade them even up. We'll fix your driveway, give you a new driveway for the opportunity to make it all match. And so we do it a little bit different with the city, but when you're using state and federal dollars, they make you actually get easements for all this. A lot of times, they're just temporary easements, just to do a little digging, and then the property goes right back, so.
Oh, thanks.
Any other questions? If not, I, there's some, I think there are probably some things here that we will need to talk about, but I want to get through everybody tonight and maybe leave the next, leave the next meeting, or maybe dealing with some of the apportionment issues that, that I think were being brought up down there, down the line. So, okay, so Tom, thank you very much. Who's up next? We got, oh, Facilities Management.
All right, I'm here for Facilities Management.
Haven't seen you in so long, Tom.
So the first project we have is replace four existing VFDs at City Hall. And these are variable frequency drives, and they basically push the air through the building itself. And the second one is City Hall Municipal Court Security Updates. We have twenty-five thousand dollars scheduled for that in twenty twenty-four. And that's to provide security updates that were brought to our attention here recently with a audit of the city of Marshfield Municipal Court.
Okay. Any question? What's, wait, do we have another act? Gee, okay, we'll go to the next one then. Okay, Fairgrounds Commission.
All right, this is an annual contribution by the city and county who both contribute twenty-five thousand towards capital projects. Recently, their loan expired, or they paid it off. They're looking at right now, reviewing RFPs for a feasibility study. I'm building an exposition building there, a large expo building, try to attract events, activities, trade shows. Right now, they're in the preliminary stages of that. They received a fifty thousand dollar grant from the county to pay for that feasibility study. So each year, the county and the city contribute twenty-five thousand towards capital projects of the fairgrounds. And then that's overseen by the Fairgrounds Commission, which is three county members as well as three city members.
Yeah, Mister Barsho.
That fair office is going to have to be replaced soon, I would assume, being that it's upstairs, it's not wheelchair accessible. The stairs that go downstairs move. I, I, I wouldn't want to hop down them steps. So I'm assuming that would have to come up soon?
That would be part of the expo building feasibility study.
The whole thing.
Yep.
Okay.
That would, that's where those offices would be relocated.
Perfect, thanks.
Anybody else over there? One of the things that we, we've talked about at county, we, we've had representatives from the fair talk to us. And there's, the, the twenty-five thousand dollars we traditionally budgeted for it was to pay our share of the debt service, and the county budgeted twenty-five thousand, also to pay their share of the debt service for, what, what was it, about a four hundred thousand dollar project we did last there? We don't have, have, have anybody on the commission, I mean, have, have they talked about what they're going to bring us? We, we, we expressed an interest in, in doing that four hundred thousand again, but is this part of, is this feasibility, or?
Right now, it's to explore that idea of an exposition center at the fairgrounds, and what that cost is and what impacts they may before going back to the county and just playing, playingfully asking for twenty-five thousand.
You guys are going to fund?
A feasibility study.
Yeah.
To get numbers.
All right. So we, we can expect something later on?
Later on this year.
Okay.
Out of that study.
Rebecca?
Um, so I just have a, maybe this is just way off topic, but didn't we just have something with like the, all the electrical, there is big electrical issues at the, at the campgrounds, at the fairgrounds? didn't we just have something with like the, all the electrical, there is big electrical issues at the, at the campgrounds, at the fairgrounds?
This year, our funds were dedicated to do electrical upgrades near the Seventeenth Street when it was reconstructed. So that is being, going forward.
Okay, so already taken care of.
Yeah, well, it's being done, but not in this CIP.
Got you.
Does that include the campgrounds too?
It does not, no.
Oh, that's what I was asking, that was the campground.
Dale is getting estimates on repairs for the campgrounds. Those are unknown at this time. And Dale's working with Pat Kilty, our electrical inspectors on those repairs. But they weren't part of the original approval by this body last year.
Okay, so I imagine we'll see something about that sometime.
I would assume so, yes. They'll probably need money at some point too, so.
I mean, I was really hoping, no, but.
Mr. Fire?
I should, when you talk about the fifty thousand dollars feasibility, are they gonna look into having, them having another borrowing like we did back? When we did the first one to four hundred thousand, that's the best bang for your buck you're ever gonna get. If you take the fifty thousand and borrow four hundred thousand, it really pays for itself. If we could do that again, that's the way to finally finance things in that fairgrounds. We did a lot, a lot of good with that four hundred thousand.
Yeah, they'll look at the overall costs of maybe building a new building plus operations and how to fund that going forward.
Natasha?
Just because this is a public meeting, are the campgrounds open right now?
Just so everyone knows, the Park and Rec does not oversee the fairgrounds. We contract that management out to the actual fair, and the campgrounds are located on fair property, and the fair runs it, and I don't camp, and I don't know if they're open. So, sorry, I don't, I would assume so, the weather's favorable, but I haven't.
Well, I know they were closed because of the electrical problem.
The electrical was shut off, but not, I don't think the campground was like closed, they just, electrical shut off for those repairs.
Anybody else? Next up, fire and rescue.
Give Tom a run for his money here. I'll walk through these projects from year, based on the year. So for twenty twenty-four, we have a squad one that says replacement, but we switched this to a refurbishment. Looking at what a new squad would cost, it was about eight hundred thousand dollars. This vehicle is twenty years old right now, but we had the frame checked out last year. We had, you know, mechanically it's sound, so we didn't see a need to replace the vehicle. However, we do need to update it. It is a two thousand, let's see, two thousand and four, I believe it is. So what this vehicle does is our mobile command center. So, you know, if we have an incident out in the county or a major incident even within the city, we're able to use this vehicle to get to a location and use it as a command center. It also houses all of our confined space equipment, all of our trench rescue, as well as some hazmat equipment as well. So instead of replacing this vehicle at the cost of eight hundred thousand, last year, we put forth the idea of using a hundred and fifty thousand to extend its life and update some of the command center portion of it, as well as some cabinetry and things like that. So light tower as well. Right now, it has incandescent lighting on it, and we'd like to switch it over to LED. So that is that project. Also in twenty twenty-four, we have twenty-five thousand dollars in there for our training center upgrade. Working on projects, building out other projects. This is a joint project with Midstate Technical College, which they also donate twenty-five thousand dollars per year for this. And again, it's to update and upgrade our training center. And I should mention too that eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars actually comes from the four-ten fund, and six thousand two hundred and fifty comes from the six-oh-five fund. All right, also in twenty twenty-four, you'll see some battery operated fans. This is a purchase three fans. We use these fans as part of our fire attack to get smoke and other harmful toxins out of the building, also to eject, you know, carbon dioxide and after the fire and smoke as well. So right now, our current fans are old. Battery on our old fans was kind of a major portion of what the fan consisted of, and it's major expense. So those are starting to fail and not take a charge anymore. What we'd like to do is upgrade this. Right now, we have pretty much all Milwaukee battery operated drills and other equipment. These new fans will use those Milwaukee batteries. So we'd just like to make that more compatible with what we have and make it work better. That is for twelve thousand six hundred for three fans. The next one is, and I think Mike, you talked about this a little bit earlier. We have seventy thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars in there for, this would cover our Motorola APX eight thousand series radios as well as MSA G1 face mask for SCBA's. And this was if the referendum was successful, it would have covered radios and that other equipment for those nine firefighters. We left it in there because the SAFER grant is still in play. Obviously, if we're not successful, this, this is one of those projects that could be removed. The next project in twenty twenty-four was for eleven thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. This was put into play as we replaced the pickup truck just this year, just this year. The pickup truck came in higher than what we had budgeted for, so we wanted to put this project in for twenty twenty-four, and it's for the preemption vehicle kit and install, as well as the Motorola, Motorola mobile radio and install. We're gonna remove that from the twenty twenty-four budget. We had a project for twenty twenty-three that actually came in under budget, so we were able to fund this project this year. And we don't need that in twenty twenty-four's budget, so that was a good thing.
Who's that, Mike? Oh, high five?
Yes, something coming out, yeah.
Yeah, that's rare, very rare.
Okay, I will recognize, I will recognize that you high five, that's good.
We kinda did too. The next project in twenty twenty-five is for replacement of car six. Car six is a two thousand and six Ford F-250 diesel. It's starting to see a lot of maintenance issues and rust issues. This is our plow vehicle as well for the station. We do save money by doing our own plowing. In total, this one came in at about eight, a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Sounds like a lot for a pickup, but once you start adding in preemptive lighting, your Motorola radio, cradle point, tough book, plow package, graphics, emergency lighting, it comes out to a hundred and eight thousand, which is just crazy. But that's, that's what it is, pricing. And then lastly, I have in twenty twenty-six, we're looking to replace engine four with a new engine. So right now, engine four is actually a quint. A quint is, for those of you who don't know, is kind of a cross between an aerial truck and an engine. So this one has the smaller ladders on top. We don't feel we need three aerial devices in the city of Marshfield. So what we felt was a better use of this, these dollars is to just buy a straight pumper. We could use the water more than what we'd use that ladder for. So this did go through the technology committee, and it was agreed upon that we'd like to purchase an engine instead of a quint. Quints were running about one point five to one point six million dollars, and an engine is about one point one million dollars. So we saw some savings there as well. That's another reason why we, we went with this option, so. I don't know if you guys wanna high five again, it's so high. So we're, we're beginning work on this already for twenty twenty-six. We're seeing lead times of thirty-two to thirty-eight months. So our specification committee has already started work on this, and they're looking at engines, so.
I do have a question, Chief.
Yeah.
Sure.
Kind of dating myself, but I can remember when Chief Cleveland stood before the council and asked for engine four. And I can't remember what year that was, so how old is that equipment, and what, what drives the need to replace it?
It's a two thousand and one engine. And I think it was two years ago or three years ago, we put thirty or forty thousand dollars just in maintenance alone into that engine. So it's, it's seen its useful life. It doesn't, you know, when you look at the mileage, you're gonna, you look at it and say, oh, it's only fifty thousand miles on this. But what you don't see is the time it's spent in pump gear, which keeps that engine running, but doesn't roll up the tachometer. So it's just basically maintenance costs that, that really we look at when, when twenty-five years is a long time to keep an engine.
So is there any state or federal requirements that we update equipment for the town our size at any particular interval?
As far as, does it need to be replaced at twenty-five years? No, there's, there's no standard out there for that, but once you start seeing rust jacking and stuff to the, to the frame, it's time for that engine to, to start seeing greener pasture somewhere else, so. And generally, we don't get, even get a whole lot for these engines at twenty-five years.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll go with Sasha and then Derek.
Thank you. Chief Waddy, I was just wondering, you're gonna refurbish squad one. How long do you think that refurbishment will last for? Because I don't see replacing in the next five years. Do you think it's gonna last for five years?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think we can get ten years out of it. It's, it has really low miles. And again, we did take it in, like I mentioned, the frames with our engine. We have no rust issues going on underneath there. The engine's still in good shape. You know, and the body's still in really good shape on that, on that apparatus, so we didn't feel the need to replace it. I would say we get ten years minimally out of it.
Derek?
Apologies for naivety. The SAFER grant, I know you mentioned that, keeping the equipment in there for that. Is that for nine employees? Is that grant still for nine?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure on the numbers, I just wanted to double check, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, on that same subject, if I understand the SAFER grant, it's, it's for three years. And are you, are you gonna get all nine firefighters in the first year, and they're, they're gonna start phasing in? Or was it three, three, and three?
No, it was to hire all nine firefighters right away, and then it's fully paid salary and benefits for three years for all nine firefighters. There is no phase.
I thought it phased out. The, the, this, so the city is actually gonna have to pick up, you know, fifty percent in the second year and seventy-five or whatever.
It's a hundred percent for three years, funding nine firefighters.
Okay. I was wondering why, if I, the last time I talked about this, it was, it was in a phase in back, but that was like a few years back when we were talking about SAFER grant.
Yeah, they differ, so some of our matching funds this particular year was fully hundred percent paid salary and benefits. So it varies from year to year how they do this and fund it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who's talking about the library? Okay, thank you. And last, not the, not last, but it'll be last for tonight, I think, is Parks and Recreation.
All right, we have a number of projects. I'll go through them, but like before, if you want to stop me and ask questions, feel free to interrupt. The Brain Park one, the first one is, one of it's a cooperative one where we're redoing all of Brain Park. It's been part of the CIP for probably ten plus years, and now we're finally getting around to making some improvements there. So that's the replacement of that brain parking lot. It's pretty self-explanatory. We're just gonna be removing what's there right now, the submaterial, pouring new parking lot with curb gutter asphalt lights and making it definitely more usable. A park maintenance building, that's replacing the flooring there. The flooring was replaced in ninety-nine, starting to show some wear and tear. The drains in there are getting full and clogged, so we'll be replacing that as well as the drains, doing some shelving to add additional shelving and some painting. The trails for Adler Road, that's a DOT grant that's in the process. I think most of you are familiar with that. This is our last section. That'll start in twenty twenty-four. Park asphalt maintenance, that's kind of an annual thing every other year, similar to what we do with the cemetery road projects. We just take a little bit of money out of the room tax and then do as much as we can with whatever asphalt are really at the top of our list. That could be seal coating, crack filling, or complete replacement. Last year, we did a lot of replacement around the zoo upper drive, and we're hoping to continue that. That's primarily our, our main source of asphalt repairs in our park system. The Grant Playground is just replacing that playground over by Grant. If you're not familiar with Grant, it's the one over by the Old Hope Lodge and the Marshall Clinic. That one is deteriorating, and we need to kind of get a little more aggressive on our playground replacements. And that'll be kind of one of our, our closer ones. Brain Park Softball Field, same as the other ones, we're gonna be replacing the softball field, moving it closer to the south and west, adding new backstop infield mix, making it a little bit smaller, bleachers, dugouts, things of that nature. Brain Park Playground is replacing that playground. The decking right now is starting to fail. We're hoping we can limp along for the next few years, but it might need to be replaced or removed altogether sooner than we want to. But we don't want to invest tons of money into a playground that's gonna be ripped out, but we're gonna try to limp along with that playground. Brain Park Pavilion and Restrooms, pretty self-explanatory again, we're gonna be taking down the current restroom structure, putting up a new restroom building, and then a separate pavilion itself, they won't be attached. So the renters themselves won't be bothered when people want to use the restroom. It'll be separate in, in the park itself. The Wildwood Station Building is just doing repairs on the building itself, mostly almost exclusively all exterior, little bit of interior, like replacing ceiling fans. It's just gonna be replacing some of the wood that's starting to deteriorate, complete staining of it, replacing some failed sidewalk areas, as well as probably some damaged tiles on the inside. Let's see, park amenities. We did a park assessment last year with our Park Rec Forestry Committee. One of the things that came out of it is they noticed inconsistencies or, or old or worn out trash cans, benches, picnic tables, not recycling in all of our parks or most of our parks. And so just to give you an idea, just a basic commercial size fifty-five gallon trash cans, about eight hundred and nine hundred dollars just to replace that. So it's extremely expensive to just replace them. So we have fifty thousand dollars to try to get a little more bigger jump. We just can't afford it out of our operations budget at this point. Strowman Park, I think you guys are familiar with that. It's attached to the old City Hall building. It's a firefighter's memorial park after firefighter Strowman lost his life in duty. Was built, I think, in ninety-nine, really has not seen much attention since then. The family, as well as the firefighter union, as well as Main Street, approached just about rehabilitating that, redeveloping it, so we're gonna rip out the vegetation and, well, not all of it. We're gonna keep some of the mature trees that are in there, some of the overgrown vegetation and reland scape it and to make it a nicer memorial for the firefighters. That's a cooperative program we're currently applying for grants and looking for donations. And we're working with the Schutz family or the Strowman family on it. Forest Ridge Basketball Court is just removing that court itself. It's got cracks that are no longer repairable. We did repair it twice over the last fifteen years, but it's got to the point the cracks are so big we can't no longer repair them. And the last two are just our asphalt maintenance program in twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-eight. And each year, we just try to take a little bit more and repair those asphalt repairs. That's about it.
Any questions? Rebecca?
I have an in general question. We have a lot of parks, and some of them are really little, and they're in neighborhoods. And how do we know those parks are being used? Is there any way you track that? Because, I mean, the one up by one you mentioned in here that's up by the
The grant, yep.
I never, ever, ever see anyone at that park. Ever. I don't know, I might see a human there.
That's a great question, and I, I would love to know how we could track usage better, whether it was maybe one day in our lifetime. We'll have a, some way to know how often the playground's being touched or how many people are
Security, security cam, we don't have security cameras?
Well, not at all of our parks, at some of our locations, but not all of our parks. Like obviously we have security cameras throughout the pool, but not like at, gr, Grant, it'd be so cost prohibitive to put a security camera there.
Just in follow-up, at some point, I think that, I, I don't know how we would do it either, but I think it needs done eventually. Because I don't know why we maintain parks that no one uses, parks that no one use. I, I, I mean, we're replacing playground equipment that no one plays on. So, I don't know if that's the installation of security cameras and we can watch that and monitor it, but, um, I'm not trying to, you know, get rid of parks, but there's no sense in maintaining parks that no one uses.
I, I think this year we're going, we're doing our comprehensive outdoor recreation plan and part of that might be evaluation of those smaller parks that may or may not be used.
Rebecca, or excuse me, Natasha?
I just wanna say for the Grant Park, um, that is on the bike trail and it's on the bike trail near Bright Horizons, um, the daycare and, um, on the bike trail on the way to the clinic. So I actually bike there all the time and there's a lot of families who use it. So that one's well used. There might be other little neighborhood ones that aren't, but, um, there's even people there early in the morning when I'm going to work.
Derek, did you wanna be recognized also or? What?
He does have a question.
Yes.
Justin, Strowman Park, uh, I was just looking through the, the funding sources on there. I know you had mentioned the grants in play for that one. Is that 50,000 in grants, is that expected? Uh, like you guys are hoping for 50,000 or do we have something secured for 50,000 in grants already?
We are hoping.
Any other questions? The mayor would like to make a few comments.
Justin, I have to say this. Someone comes to me almost every other day thanking you guys for repaving around the, uh, like the Buffalo Pen. I can't believe that, it's just, it's so great to see that people see what's going on. And I'm not kidding, every other day somebody comes up to me and says, "Did you repave that?" I said, "Well, no, but we, we made this happen." Through, yeah, through the concerted effort, so thank you. Just the good things we need to show off and that is a really good thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Justin? It's seen as that there's nobody here to represent the police department, so we couldn't go on if we wanted to. And the, 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 we're seeing the hour of eight o'clock. We're gonna declare it over for today and, uh, we got somebody else? Oh, where?
Oh, Chris?
Chris, okay. I'm sorry. We're, we will pick up where we left off at the next, uh, meeting, so.
June 1st.
June, that is June 1st.
June 1st at six o'clock here.
Right. Okay. If not, uh, we'll declare the proceedings closed for the day and we will adjourn. Thank you.
We need a motion.
I need a motion.
Yeah, you know, oh, you need a motion? Oh, Steve? No, I'll get one down, that's fine.
This is regarding the UW presentation. Uh, they, they mentioned that they did have a meeting last week and, and finalized their, uh, request under the CIP program. And I did get it yesterday from, uh, Tony Edwards. And I, I meant to make copies and hand it out tonight. I can send it to you electronically, that might be the easiest thing to do. And what you'll see when you look at it is it looks different quite, by quite a bit. Please note though, that they've got, their, their plan is 2023 through 2027. So there's a big expense in 2023 that we've already factored in, it's already been an approved project. It's a rooftop unit in the commons, so that accounts for most of the difference. So really, uh, if you look at, at the rest of it, they're looking at 362,500 dollars and we were planning on 347,500 dollars. The difference is really they've upped the, the dollar amount on a couple of projects because, you know, the costs continue to rise. So if you take out that 215 in your 2023, it will look reasonably similar with some shuffling. Thank you.
Thank you. I am reliably informed that I need a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion? Motion by the Spiro, second by everybody else. All those in favor say aye? Aye, we stand adjourned.